And Tammy will call roll.
All right. Bartlett is absent and excused. Hirsch?
Here.
Swadley?
Here.
Boersma?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Mieske?
Here.
Engelberger?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Trul?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
There are 10 aldermen present.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight with Communications. And I will let those at home know, as all of us here tonight are aware, that Alderperson Kittleson has resigned from our Common Council effective December 29th. So he's no longer serving on the council. And I'd like to thank him for his service to our community while he did participate and help us through some great discussions. Also would like to share that VIDA, those of you that remember, VIDA is the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. VIDA had been in Stoughton for several years, was not here last year, but is coming back this year. And they will be at Covenant Lutheran Church. And they will begin on February 10th. And their last date will be April 5th. And you can call, there's a number that will get out on the website, as well as the Senior Center and other places, to call to make an appointment to have your taxes done. Anyone can use the VIDA program that uses the simplified state and federal forms. So that's a good service to have in Stoughton. Communications from our alderpersons. All right, thank you. We'll get started then. Public Comment Period is next. We do have two folks that have signed up to speak at the Public Comment Period. We'll begin with Tim Carter. And he is at 1648 Robie Road.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm speaking to the financial report. And it's, I don't know how this directly affects our taxes or not. But what I have garnered from the report is that there are three parts of the report that show a very large surplus. The Library GIP Fund is, has a fund of over $200,000. And I don't know, again, I'm not certain how this, where the council can guide and manage this. The Senior Center has a restricted fund of over $420,000. And when I was on the council 10 years ago, it was $420,000. And it seems to me that that type of money should be an instrument that, at this point in time, would be double that. But yet it's not spent. The third is the food pantry. The food pantry's surplus is $170,000. It's more than double that it was a year ago. So what that's indicating to me is that the need is less than the funds that are available. Whether it's an outreach issue, or whether it's something else. But when we have a fund that's grown for more than 100% in a year, you know, that needs to be addressed. I don't have the solutions. I'm just pointing this out, that we have three funds that are, what I believe are in excess of what the needs are proving. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a real quick comment in that those three funds are all donation dollars. So as Mr. Carter mentioned or questioned how it might affect taxes, none of those funds come from our taxes. Those come from donations to those particular accounts. Just to be clear on that, so folks know.
Yes, but that also could impact how the council looks at their budgets. So, you know, yes, I know, Mayor, that these funds are donated for the most part. But yet, you know, that's a lot of money. It's over $800,000.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next registered to speak is Paul and Teresa Reddy.
Paul and I have lived, we wrote the letter that you all received via email on regards to the reconstruction on Christie Lane. We just wanted to come in and talk about the proposal. I did go to the meeting on the 19th of December, and I heard the proposal. We've had a chance to talk about it, and we've contacted neighbors. There's a lot of feeling going on that the monies could be spent better ways. It's going to be, we live on the corner of Christie Lane and Vernon Street. And it's going to be, we live on a dead-end street with an electrical substation at the end. The proposal is to put a sidewalk on each side of the street, and then to narrow the street four feet. And then you want to put a turnaround at the bottom by the substation. But we feel that if you didn't narrow the street because there are parking along the street, that the trucks that come to repair or service the substation could still do that. But by narrowing it, you're also going to, there's a burden, a financial burden, to put not only in the sidewalks, but the curb and gutters that don't need to be repaired or changed at this point. The only thing that needs to be changed is the street and the drainage. We agree. I mean, we've lived there 27 years, and the drainage is terrible. So we're not against the whole project, just it also, because our taxes also went up this year. And I realize that we'll still have 10 years to pay this debt off. But, and I realize that the sidewalks, you want to connect the community. But it's a dead-end street. There won't be anybody that connects to us. It'll just be our six houses that use the sidewalk. There's just, like I said, six houses. The substation, sometimes when there's issues with the substation, it's not safe to walk around there, and there's a big fence. And so to have a sidewalk that ends at the substation, you're kind of encouraging people to walk through an area that might be potentially dangerous. And we've talked to our other neighbors, and I'm thinking that in the future, they'll be contacting and talking about their issues also. We've kind of walked, not walked, but we drove through town. And there are lots of other streets in the community, in more of a populated area, that the street either, and I know, it's a total reconstruct, and I know that when the reconstruct happens, then that's when the sidewalks come in. But there are a lot of sidewalks, streets that have either one-side sidewalk, or they have no sidewalk at all. And I feel that our tax dollars could be spent better ways by putting maybe a sidewalk in the areas that have none, that would connect the community better.
Thank you.
Thank you. For those who don't know, that's District 2. All right, thank you. And that's all that I have registered to speak. Are there others that would like to speak at the Public Comment Period? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight consists of the December 12, 2017 Council minutes, as well as Resolution 1, 2018, a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue operators licenses to various applicants. And did it approve? There's been a motion by Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Hirsch. Would any alderperson wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There is no old business this evening. New business starts with Resolution 2 of 2018. This comes from our Planning Commission. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning Commission brings forth Resolution 2-2018, a resolution approving a conditional use permit request by Kevin Yeska of JSD Professional Development for a hotel and convention center located at 2500 Jackson Street in Stoughton, Wisconsin. Move approval.
There's a motion by Trul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe Kevin is here if there are questions. Fundamentally, this is a change from what we had seen previously, where they were bringing in both the hotel and the conference center. They've indicated that they still intend to build the conference center. It's just, however, it's a second phase, and so they needed to come back and bring a revised site plan. But Kevin, folks want?
Thank you.
Questions?
Planning Director Schill.
I think you've nailed it on the head. On the screen, you can see the future conference center. With that being delayed, the need for the additional parking and the modifications to the site to accommodate this are really the principal change from what was previously approved in the site plan. Mr. Yeska, again, is here if there's questions. But that's the principal reason for bringing it back here, to modify the site plan and phase it in over time.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
And Rodney, if you want to mention it too, again, about the street trees. We did have an extensive discussion about some of the landscaping and how this plays and there's a resolution.
Yeah, there was a question about the required street trees. That was clarified following, the following day. The street trees that were required will be installed as part of this project, as well as the Jackson Street improvements along that location, so.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Alderperson Hirsch.
Do we have like a timeline of when the conference center is going to actually be put in? I mean, is it like future 20 years, future one year, future five years?
Kevin, could you come up to the podium, and maybe you could help us? Thank you.
Hi there. Kevin Yeska with JSD. I'm speaking on behalf of Dennis tonight. He couldn't make it. But to answer that question, I don't have a definitive answer on the conference center. I do have an anticipated groundbreaking for the hotel is May 1st. And then that would go through March 1st. So we are moving forward on the hotel. Just that the conference center is, like you said, is the second phase. I don't have details on it happening. That's Ring Road we have now on our site plan. We are just doing like a temporary asphalt curb around it. We do want this to happen in the future. We would be demolishing what's north of the hotel in the future, putting in the conference center. So we're doing everything we can to just temporarily put this in, make the hotel work, and then come back later for the conference center.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Council President Swadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So there's a number of exceptions that were in the plan that the Planning Commission, you know, recommend that we approve. Are these the same lists that was in the first proposal?
Yeah, it's the big box standard that we went over again. You know, 10-foot sidewalks, we're proposing seven and five in some places. Interior seating, it doesn't really apply for a hotel use, whereas it might apply for, say, the Walmart. So, yeah, it was exactly what we went through in 2016.
Thank you.
Thank you. No additional comments or questions? There was a motion by Alderperson Trul, second by Alderperson Engelberger. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? No. That motion carries with one no.
Thank you, everybody.
Resolution 3 of 2018 comes from our Finance Committee. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 3, 2018, authorizing and directing proper city officials to respectfully decline the proposal from McFarland State Bank to donate the property located at 207 South Forest Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin. City Finance Committee voted 2 to 2 on December 12th. So it was a tie.
And are you making a motion to?
I am making a motion to approve that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Thank you. Alderperson O'Connor.
Well, in the packet, there was information on how the McFarland State Bank very generously offered their property to us. They are no longer interested in having the physical building that they're currently in downtown and constructing a new piece of, a new building where the parking lot is now. They're vacating the building because they don't believe they can maintain it. We discussed at Finance several alternatives, one, making it into a parking lot. That was going to be fairly expensive, I think. We figured about $500,000. Or secondly, to repurpose the building to the city's use, or some other use. And we didn't come to any specific conclusions, and so that's why it's here.
Thank you. And Mike Medurski from McFarland Bank is here this evening if we have questions for him as well. Alderperson Boersma.
I just have a question, if you could, Pat. What the necessary timeline is on this? I mean, are we, do we have dates specific that they want an answer to for sure? Or can we delay it for, to collect more information, or to have further discussion on it?
Well, I think they want to move ahead with it. And obviously, the bank representative could talk more about that. They would like to move ahead with their building, and they'd like an answer of some sort. I think they're willing to work with us if we're going to have a specific course of action that we're going to follow through with. Otherwise, I think that we should decline.
Thank you. Mr. Medurski is here. I'd like to have him answer your questions. One moment, please.
I just make my comments because I just, I just don't know enough about it to vote one way or the other.
Yeah, and there's no specific timeframe. I mean, if the council decides they need more information, we'd be more than glad to talk through that. So there's no set date, so.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I see it was a 2-2 vote at the committee, and I guess I would like to hear from those committee members to see what the discussion was. I wasn't privy to those discussions.
Sure. Alderperson, or Council President Swadley had his hand up next, so he can help us.
Thank you, Your Honor. And the reason I voted against it was, part of the discussion we had was to look at whether or not there was an opportunity for the city to obtain the building and use it for a municipal building, which the bank had generously said that they would be willing to entertain that discussion. And I was still hoping to continue that discussion. And a couple of the questions that I had relating to that, the first one was, I was looking for information as far as what kind of work needs to be done to the building if the city were to obtain the building, some cost numbers. One of the things that I did, and Rodney helped me with this, is we got a copy of a real estate condition report, which is basically a disclosure form that is used when properties are sold. And I was hoping that the bank would be generous enough to go through that form and at least give us an idea of what kind of challenges there may be if that building was to continue to exist. And then the other question would be, is if we were to obtain the building, one of the things we'd have to do is help McFarland State Bank relocate to another site, because they are still showing some interest in having a downtown presence, which I certainly appreciate. So then the idea was, would the bank be willing to consider operating out of the bank with the city still, you know, owning the building? And then you could utilize a drive-through that's existing and do whatever modest remodeling may need to be done in order to meet the needs of the bank and your customers.
Do you want to respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I think where we left it in the Finance Committee, I don't want to necessarily rehash everything, but, you know, we're open to, you know, whatever the city would like. I mean, we looked at it, the reason we came originally with the parking lot idea was really, you know, we thought, we keep on hearing there's a need for parking downtown, and we don't have to debate that here. But I think we saw that as an investment into the downtown, and we have said we're interested in staying in downtown. We have customers there that we can service. And so, you know, we're, we're open to talking about it, essentially, is what we could do. Ultimately, it'll be our board's decision, but we're open to discussions.
Thank you. Alderperson Mieske.
Yeah, I'm on the Finance Committee, but I unfortunately was not able to make that meeting. If I would have, this resolution would not be in front of me right now, because I would have voted to continue discussions. I don't, I think we're premature with this resolution as it stands. And we haven't had enough time to really figure out what we, where we stand with everything, and how we should move forward yet. I think this is premature.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
I agree that, you know, I would like to see what we could, to do and have further discussions. And also, the good city employee I am, I'd be willing to move your money for you, okay?
Thank you. Alderperson O'Connor, and then Reeves.
I guess one of the things that I struggled with was, it appears that we're looking for something to do with the building, not necessarily anything that's been identified as a need, or if this would fit the need that we have. So that's one of my primary objections, along with if it were to become a public building, I think parking remains to be a problem, not only for the bank, but for us.
Thank you. Alderperson Reeves.
I'm also on the Finance Committee, and I would concur, I'd say primarily with what Alderperson Mieske and Alderperson, or President Swadley have said. Initially, I would say I was not in favor, well, when the initial proposal came out and it was to take down the building for a parking lot, I would concur. I thought the costs would be prohibitive. I wasn't sure that that was really the prime location. But I do think that it would be premature to decline this opportunity until we really have all the facts. I'm not sure if we know if we can use that space or not. Or I haven't seen the inside of the building. I'd like to take a tour to see if it might fit, you know, as a city property. So I'm not prepared to say no at this time.
I don't think it's bad to bring it to the council, so we're getting more input, and that's important as well. Alderperson Jensen, Hirsch, and then Engelberger.
Given what has been said here, I'd like to make a motion to table this and send it back to the Finance Committee for further discussion and resolution on what to do with this property, if we want to accept it or not, or what future use it might have, so on. So I'd make that motion.
I second that.
There's a motion by Jensen, second by Boersma, to table and refer back to Finance. So a motion to table stops discussion and takes us to the vote.
Sorry.
Pat, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I, for our discussion purposes at Finance, I think one of the primary holdbacks for us is, one, if we need to do a structural study of the building, and so.
Continuing the discussion. Yeah, I thought the motion to table was not.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't discuss. Well, yeah, the motion to table, we'll need to, we'll vote by rule. To table.
Aye.
Swadley?
No.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Can I ask?
To table.
To table. Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
No.
Bartlett is absent, so. Motion to table, 8 to 2.
It is 8 to 2. All right. Thank you. That'll go back to Finance for further discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Resolution 4 of 2018 comes from our Redevelopment Authority. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Fourth Resolution 4, 2018, a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to award the change order for the Carpet Warehouse Building demolition in the Riverfront Redevelopment Area, located at 425 East South Street. And move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Trul, second by O'Connor. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a part of the Redevelopment Authority's work with the demolition that's going on right now with the Milfab Building, and actually, the physical demolition will be undertaking, undertaken next week, likely within the next week. They've been doing abatement work down there. We did go and request a proposal from Earth Construction, who was the low bidder on the project originally, and asked for an estimate, a proposal from them to take down the Carpet Warehouse Building as well. They've indicated that the proposal they've provided here maintains the same cost per square foot, that pricing system that they had used for the Milfab Building. And they were significantly lower than a number of the other bidders on that building. We also asked what their cost would be if they were to do it, if they had to come back and remobilize and the like. And they indicated that there was approximately, I think it was a $4,000 or $5,000 mobilization, remobilization charge as well. And so the Redevelopment Authority thought it was wise, as long as they're on-site, to proceed with this, to take the building down. It'll also allow us to, when the Milfab property, when Milfab buildings are down and take this down, it'll allow us to reduce the security area that we're dealing with for the Highway Trailer Building. So ultimately, we'll be able to take the fencing from kind of the entire seven acres or eight acres that we've got right now, to just be able to secure the Highway Trailer Building until the council decides what the next step is there. So I would encourage you to support this.
Thank you. This motion, or this resolution, was also discussed at Finance tonight. Alderperson O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Finance did approve it 5 to 0. They also, we also designated that the funding for it should come from the general fund versus taking out a loan.
Versus what?
Taking out a loan.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Alderperson Boersma.
Just the amount it's going to cost us.
58,300. 40,000.
58,000. A total of 58,300.
58,000, yeah. My apologies, it's in the resolution, but yes, it's, the Earth Construction is 48,300. And Dirty Ducks, which is the company that does the abatement, has a not-to-exceed price of $10,000.
It's actually 10,283. Sorry, we just got a recent update.
Further questions? Alderperson Johnson.
I am not convinced that this needs to be done now. I will be voting no, just because of the money.
Thank you. Additional questions? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, is this, is this a new bid or a rebid, or did we not bid this in the past?
Sure. Alderperson Trul.
Again, it was, the original Milfab proposal was competitively bid. We then sought a change in scope request from now.
But this was not in the scope at the time?
Correct.
So we hadn't, we hadn't approved this prior. I was thinking this was like a $10,000 addition or something to the bid that we had, but it's not.
No.
Okay. And what was, what was the comment about the Highway Trailer Building? I missed that.
My comment was that the RDA, and again, Regina can certainly comment on this as well, the thought of the advantage of taking this down now, it will save us dollars in terms of, we believe, with not having to have another firm come back on and remobilize, it'll also allow us to take, take the building, if we take this down, and when we get the rest of the Milfab property, the other seven buildings down there, down, all we'll need to do then is, is reduce the fencing and security area that we have around the Highway Trailer Building. And ultimately, the property down there will be, when the buildings are removed, they'll be topsoil and seeded. So it'll be, in a state that'll be much more attractive for us until we decide going out for requests for polls.
So part of the, part of this bid is, and the other bid for Milfab was to remove all the asphalt and concrete that's on the site also?
What they're doing is they're actually taking out just the building sites, and they'll bring topsoil back in. The main drives and a lot of the asphalt that's down there will remain until we decide where we go from there.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm not, I'm wondering why the asphalt wasn't thought of now to remove rather than later. of now to remove rather than later?
I think part of it was a discussion about trying to keep our costs as reasonable as we could from a demo. Again, you, you, we actually will be executing a contract. We finally are getting the hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state as a part of it, so trying to keep the costs reasonable.
Okay. Is that, just another question, if I could, that a hundred and fifty thousand loan from the state, or grant, or whatever it is, maybe Gary can answer this, is that like an annual thing? I mean, like, if you do something in the following year, you can get another hundred and fifty thousand possibly?
It's per project, but like Gary discussed, we can't even apply until we complete it, but then it is possible for us to come back.
Yeah, the, well, the program that we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand from is the site assessment grant program, and the reason it's a site assessment that's paying for demolition is that we need to get under the buildings to assess the condition of the soil underneath that. So that's why this program is paid for.
So it's a one-time shot for this?
It's pretty much a one-time. It would be, I mean, we can consider applying for another grant for the Carpet Warehouse Building, but it's a sixty thousand dollars, and, you know, we might get half of that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Gary.
Having said that, Gary, just a point of reference, I mean, again, depending on what we ultimately decide to do with the Highway Trailer Building, would the Highway Trailer Building also potentially be a, should we choose to remove parts of it or whatever, that might also be eligible?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for Alder Person Engelberger, the reason why the Carpet Warehouse wasn't in the original bill bid for the Milfab was that we did not own it at that time. And so, since that time, and because things have been delayed because of weather and the contractor that won the bid, it just so happens that because it was delayed, that now that we own it, it's kind of prudent to add it on to that contract.
Thank you. Alder Person Boersma?
Alder Person Hirsch stole my thunder.
Sorry, nothing else to say. Further comments or questions? Otherwise, we do have a motion by Alder Person Truel, second by O'Connor, to approve Resolution four, 2018. We'll vote by roll call. Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Motion carries nine to one. Thank you. Resolution five of 2018 comes from our Public Works Committee. Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works presents our five, 2018, resolution accepting certain public improvements made by Harvest Farms LLC for Nordic Ridge Phase One and Phase Two, and I would so move.
So a motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Connor. Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, the Public Works Committee met on December nineteenth. We voted five oh with the mayor voting on that to approve. This was simply to accept completion of required improvements to the, to the sites. Rodney, you can probably explain a little bit further.
I think the project went smoothly. This is one of the steps that's outlined in the development agreement. Once the product is ready for acceptance, this is a process to go through. You'll note in the resolution, we are retaining a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar letter of credit to finalize the surface code and any warranty, warranty work that's necessary. But I'll have to say that the first two phases of this project went generally quite smooth, with the second phase, I think, even going slightly better than the first phase.
Thank you. Come answer questions. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Resolution, Resolution six of 2018 comes from our Public Works as well. Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution six, 2018, a resolution to participate in the Storm Drain Art Program, and I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, this is an interesting thing. You can see in the packet, there's some examples of what the storm art is. It's, the funds will be coming from Dean County and the Madison Area Storm Water Partnership. So it's net, debt neutral to us, so it'd be a fun thing. Why not?
Pretty cool program. Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to mention that I'm all in favor of this. In addition to the art that it presents to the community, it's also a learning opportunity for people to understand. A lot of people don't even know where the water goes, or salt goes, or leaves, or anything else. This can be a good learning experience for, for the community. It's a really good program, I think.
Yeah, fun program. Thank you. Alder Person Boersma?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention also that I'm on, I'm on Public Works, and I voted in favor of this there, and I will be voting in favor of this here. We had a special project a number of years ago with our students from the high school, painting garbage cans around, and I noticed they're still around. And it was a great project, and, and this, this is like a similar sort of project, and I think it's just great to involve our kids in the process of beautifying our city.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch?
I think this is a great project. I just question, you, it's going to happen in the two drains in front of the senior center. It would have been really great if it was closer to downtown, because then it gets more foot traffic. You guys, what, how did you choose those two drains? Just because, you know, I'm just looking at who all walks in downtown.
Yeah. First of all, the school is really hoping to be able to do something on their own site, so they can utilize it as a training opportunity right on their campus. This site on the facility at the senior center offered an opportunity in that it's, it's near the river, and it's also a public building. There's also a concern about putting this on a corner in which we don't have a city bill. At least, I think there might be a concern. I think there'd be general support, but I think it's easier if it's fronting a city property, at least for this initial effort.
Okay, thanks. I was curious of why.
There's also very little storm sewer up at the top of the hill.
That's true.
All right, thank you. Further questions or statements, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution seven of 2018 comes from our Public Works Committee. Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you again. Public Works presents our seven, 2018, resolution authorizing directing the proper city officials to approve a five dollar fee increase per television or computer monitor as part of the e-waste recycling program effective January tenth, 2018, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, John's raised their cost to us for the e-waste, and therefore, we needed to raise ours to cover that cost.
Thank you. Questions? Alder Person Mieske?
Reading in the packet, Director Haber said that all you needed was four dollars, and you decided to go for an extra dollar, so you're more than covering the cost.
Yeah, more than covering the cost because we're anticipating that there'll be more increases along the way. It's just simply...
But that won't be, but that won't be until another annual, year or so down the road, so why would you be, the idea of this is not to make money off it. The idea of this is to keep electronics off of the streets and out in the countryside. So the extra dollar bothers me. This should be, this should be revenue neutral.
The discussion at Public Works also talked a little bit about the extra, the four dollars would make it difficult, probably not difficult, but cumbersome to make change. It's four dollars rather than five. The four dollars didn't include any administrative costs, never has, but they didn't feel that the five was going too far above and beyond expectations, I guess. If you'd like to make an amendment, you certainly can, but that was, that was the discussion. Brett has some comments as well.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the Public Works Committee meeting in December because of a family illness, but the original reason for fourteen dollars was to essentially break even the administrative costs from our, our salaries to perform those duties. The other thing that wasn't talked about is that we do take TVs that come in from, essentially are picked up in the community, and nobody pays for those. So that could help to offset some of those costs that aren't accounted for from our users.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm on the committee also, and I, I actually recommended this, and I don't have a problem with the extra dollar. I just feel like Brett says that we can recoup some costs, and it's not like it's an excessive fee that we're charging here.
And I will add to that, that we are right in line with other recycling centers in this area, Madison and Janesville. Also, we're below some other private collectors in the area as well. So we're at fifty dollar mark, that is right in line, or fourteen is right in line with, with other collectors.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Ordinance one of 2018 comes from our Public Works Committee for a first reading. Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance one, 2018, ordinance to amend section twelve, excuse me, ten dash two, construction standards, chapter twelve, excuse me, ten dash twelve, fire detection device, chapter ten dash thirteen, fire extinguishers, ten thirty-one, electrical state laws adopted, chapter ten dash sixty-one, state plumbing code adopted, related to adopted building codes, and this is here for first reading. We'll see it again on the twenty-third.
Any preliminary comments or questions?
I can add one.
Rodney can speak to us, sure.
You'll certainly have the redline version in your packet next. It was included to be with you, but it's unfortunately not in your packet as a redline version. The principal change is recognizing that the agency that the code is from is now Department of Safety and Protective Services, so you'll, you'll recognize that as the principal change related to this code section. Redline version will be in your packet for the next meeting.
Thank you. Ordinance two of 2018 comes from our Community Affairs Council Policy Committee for a first reading. Alder Person Reeves?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance two dash two, 2018, ordinance amending section two dash six seven B two of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the Community Affairs Council Policies Committee regarding IT Media Services Department reporting to CACP, which is Community Affairs Council Policy. This, we were, approved it five oh on November seventh. This is a first reading, and it will also come back January twenty-third.
Right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and possible action regarding the aldermanic seat vacancy in District One due to the resignation of Alder Person Dennis Kittleson. Attorney Dregney has put together a memo for our review and discussion this evening, so I'll turn it over to Matt for discussion, please.
Rather than get too deep into the weeds, I'll just get to the conclusion, which is the council has four options outlined in the memo with respect to this vacancy. One is to leave the office vacant until the regular election in April 2019, so a year from this April. The next is to appoint someone to serve between now and the April 2019 election. The next option is to leave the seat vacant until a special election can be held in November of this year, 2018. And the last option is to appoint someone to serve until a special election can be held in November of 2018. If, if a person is elected at a special election in November 2018, they would then serve only until the following spring, April of 2019. We did ask the question whether the city could choose to schedule essentially a special election this April, just a few months from now, to have someone elected to fill out the remainder of the term, and that's not possible given certain deadlines that have to be satisfied between now and that election, and it's just not feasible to do that. So those are the options the council has. If the council takes no action whatsoever and does nothing, then the seat would simply be left vacant until April of 2019.
Thank you. Comments and questions from our alderpersons? Alder Person Boersma and Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is my district, District One, and just to behalf of, I think, the folks in my district, I would like to have the council appoint someone for this position. I think it's a long time to wait before if we would leave it vacant. I think that just in terms of representation from my district, that I'd rather have another person serving on the city council.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion that we start the process to fill the appointment or appoint the position, and basically like we've done in the recent past with several aldermen, alderperson vacancies, and I think that would be, would that be number two, or B, Matt?
It's either B or D. So you have to decide, you don't have to decide that tonight necessarily, but you'd have to decide at the time you make the appointment, is this an appointment to serve until you have a new election in April of 2019, or do you want to plan for a special election in November?
I don't think we need a special election myself.
Kind of costly.
So that's B. Do you want to start the process to, to move towards an appointment under B?
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Alder Person Engelberger, second by Swadley. Alder Person Hirsch?
Well, I'm going to say what Boers, Alder Person Boersma did. Engelberger stole my thunder.
That was exactly what I was going to say. Darren Thunder Steelers tonight, I tell you. All right, further comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead. There's a motion by Engelberger, second by Swadley, to proceed in the process to appoint, as in the past, which, just for clarification, in the past, we have advertised in the local newspaper for two weeks, two Thursdays in a row, then had, had folks fill out that application. It would then come back to the next proceeding council meeting for interviews and appointments.
So that council meeting would be, what, first or second one in February, more than likely?
Probably the second, probably the second one at this point.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Because it gets advertised.
It gets advertised twice.
And they have a deadline.
It's not, probably not going to...
Whatever it works out to.
Yeah, it won't make it there this week, so it'll be, I don't know, Bill, be a couple weeks, right? We, we can let you know exactly when it'll be coming back. So that, that is the motion on the floor. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries.
Move to adjourn?
Well, we're not quite finished yet.
It's right here.
Could we finish, please?
Move to adjourn, noise in order.
There was an amendment.
You missed number fourteen.
Not quite yet. I'd like to do Resolution eight of 2018, and this is, I guess I'll start, and it's, it comes from, I've already talked with our personnel chair, Alder Person Mieske, about it, but this is, Resolution eight is a resolution confirming the appointment and hiring of Holly Lick, Licked, and I apologize, I say her name wrong, Licked, as our new Stoughton City Clerk. We followed the hiring process as usual. As you know, the city clerk is not a department head or a leadership team position for the city of Stoughton. However, we learned after following the process as usual, that a city clerk is an appointed position, so we need the council's confirmation of her hiring or appointment to the Stoughton City Council, or to the, as our Stoughton City Clerk. You have her, her resume in, in the packet. Real briefly, Holly has completed her three years through the Municipal Clerks Association. She will, at the beginning of this year, 2018, become a certified municipal clerk. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in politics and political science and history. So we, we all felt, Tammy and HR Director Gillingham, and I felt that she was absolutely the best candidate for, for us here in Stoughton. And the deputy clerk. And the deputy clerk as well was on the interview, on the panel. So I would entertain a motion to do so.
So move.
Alder Person O'Connor?
I move to approve Holly Licked as the Stoughton City Clerk.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Jensen. And since this is an official appointment, we'll vote by roll call.
I have a question, Mayor?
Yes.
The salary range is, was, is that where it was pegged before, or was there an adjustment to the pay, if you recall?
It's, it's a little lower, I think, than where...
It's, it's a little lower, I think, than where Lana was at, but it's right around that ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll vote by roll call. Okay. O'Connor?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Swadley?